It's been kind of exciting just seeing what God's been doing, how God's been directing us. And for all that the Lord has, I just want to encourage you, we're going to take a look at a few scriptures this evening. Kind of the way it'll run, we'll have a pretty similar to the other one, only videos are a little bit longer. And then we'll have a discussion time and prayer after that. So prayerfully, there'll be an opportunity for us to grow. The big part, guys, the big part of this study probably is not going to be the earth-shattering things that we discuss, although maybe there will be some. But the idea of your personal journey in five days as you work your way through the book, just your personal devotion time. So it's something I'm going to be doing for my devotion time. Usually I do one year Bible stuff, now I'll be doing this for the next eight weeks. Just to see, you know, what the Lord's going to do, how the Lord's going to work and move in it. So I encourage you, as you do, just make that your time. Well, it doesn't matter, you know, I'm not going to make a rule on how you ought to do it, whether morning or when. Just fit it in your day. I always like to say, God wants a sandwich. So, you know, give him a little bit in the morning and a little bit at night. And that's a pretty good deal. You've begun with the Lord and you've finished with Him. It's kind of a nice way to put it together. Don't get yourself under a bunch of condemnation, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't answer all the questions." Well, don't worry, then when we have discussion time, you won't have much to say. That's all right. Right? And but if you do, if you've got questions or things, it's kind of open forum. So, you know, when we're discussing those things, we can take a look at. So we're going to take a look at verses first. Did you put my stuff away? Are you good? Look at you go! You're like an audiovisual man now. Levi, the audiovisual guy. We're going to take a look at just a few verses. And I think they'll come up in your study as you work your way through the week. But I just want us to kind of touch on the concept that throughout Scripture, and obviously this is not an exhaustive set of scriptures we're going to be looking at, but throughout Scripture, there's been this idea, this concept of prayer used as a form of relationship with God. As our vehicle for spending time with Him, for talking with Him, for connecting with Him. All those are things that we'll be taking a look at and discussing a little bit tonight. But here's what we see in Genesis 25:21. It says, "And Isaac prayed to the Lord for his wife, because she was barren; and the Lord granted his prayer; and Rebecca, his wife, conceived." So we see this idea, this concept throughout Scripture where prayer is accomplishing something. And we always ask ourselves, because we battle between two great poles. God is sovereign and has a plan, and He's going to accomplish His will. And prayer accomplishes something. How those two things come together, you know, we get in that, you know, kind of wrestle with the philosophy of it. I'm just telling you what the Word says. So here's what the Word says, "He prayed, and God opened her womb." And there was a sense of obedience from Isaac as he went in prayer to the Lord, and God meeting him in that place. But it's more than just a thing where we go and we lay out our shopping list, right? That's, you know, we'll talk about multiple types of prayer. We'll even take a little, a quick look at it tonight. But in Exodus 33:11, it says that,[244.34][244.42]"Thus the Lord used to speak to Moses face to face, as a man speaks to his friend." On the idea that Moses, in the time Moses speaking to God and the relationship that he enjoyed with the Lord. That there is a sense in which prayer is not necessarily the formal concepts maybe that we consider about prayer, but prayer is relating to God as a man would relate to his friends. Some of the greatest prayer times I've ever had, in the back of a truck in the middle of nowhere. You know, maybe I just go out past Balance Rock, keep going for a while, take a left on a dirt road, and stop when I can't see people anymore, and I don't hear any gunshots. And then I stop and just sit in the truck and talk to God. And the times, you know, just feeling His presence with me. No earth-shattering answers, no cures that He gave me, no, nothing. Just a close feeling of His closeness with me. And, you know, those are, I think, needs to be part of our goal, right? That sometimes we come to this concept of prayer very selfishly. What can I get God to do for me? How do I get Him to get rid of all my problems? Well, He might want your problems in your life. So, you know, you may be butting heads, but to recognize the relational part of prayer, coming and spending time with God, even as a man spends with his friends. In Psalm 55:17, when we look at David and his prayer, he says, "Evening and morning and at noon I utter my complaint and moan, and he hears my voice." David, as he's reflecting on his prayer time, the point is, he's praying all the time, right? It's not a new concept for us. Paul's going to say later on, pray without ceasing. That the Lord always hears, yes? He's listening now. We may not have knees bowed and eyes closed and hands neatly folded, but He's here and He's listening. And it's that easy and quick when we find ourselves in a bad place. In fact, what was it? It just happened tonight, must have been a computer. I was back there, you know, had enough time while the computer's deciding whether or not it's going to work tonight, which you can imagine might be a little bit of a nightmare since we got a bunch of stuff on it. But just a quick little prayer as it's booting up. And, you know, I don't know why, where, what for, when. I know Amy spent some time working on it, trying to get it to go. But, you know, it came on. So praise God, hallelujah. I may beat it with a pipe when we're done, just to get my frustrations out. But it's working right now. And so the idea, there's not the necessity of having a special room or a special place. Prayer can happen all the time. That doesn't mean we don't have to have it, or shouldn't have a special place, or a specific time for prayer, or a strategy for prayer. All those things are good too. But to recognize it can happen at any time. There's one thing really, and they touched on it a little bit in the videos, that Jesus' disciples specifically asked Him to teach them, right? "Lord, teach us to pray." In Matthew, chapter 6, verse 9, this is what Jesus said. And we're all, in one way or another, familiar with this prayer, right? Jesus said, "Pray like this: Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name; your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; forgive us our debts, as we also have forgiven our debtors; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil." We have just a model prayer. All the Gospels touch on it. We have an opportunity to take a look at all those ideals. But it's something, you know, there's a, I want to say it's in the Gospel of Luke, but I didn't get a chance to dig it up. But the Lord declared that phrase that I shared in the prayer, and that is this, "Men ought to always pray and not lose heart." Why'd God link those two things together? Maybe because that's where they go. The ability to not lose heart is linked to man's willingness and desire to pray. Paul in Philippians, chapter 1, verses 4 through 5, he said, "Always in every prayer of mine for you, making my prayer with joy, because of your partnership in the gospel from the first day until now." So we see this concept, this legacy of prayer, even in the life of Paul, the disciples through Jesus, from all the way from Abraham through the book of Genesis, the Old Testament, the prophets, even all the way to Paul, this attitude of prayer, 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 prayer. Romans 8:15 says, "For you did not receive the spirit of slavery, to fall back into fear, but you received the spirit of adoption as sons, by whom we cry out, 'Abba, father.'" That the opportunity to have a relationship through which we can call the transcendent God of the universe, Father. And the Spirit Himself bears witness with our spirit that we are the children of God. We've been adopted into that family. It goes on in verse 26 to say, "Likewise also the Spirit helps us in our weakness; for we do not know what to pray for as we ought; but the Spirit intercedes with us with groanings too deep for words." The concept, we talked about it last time in the war room, the concept that the Holy Spirit fixes it. We don't got to be stressed out, how we pray, did I say the right words, did it make sense? You know, those tend to be pride issues if we're praying out loud. But the idea of our prayers to recognize, God just wants us to do it. The Holy Spirit will work it out. The Holy Spirit will work in that prayer. Fixing that prayer for what? It says, "He who searches hearts knows what is the mind of the Spirit; because the Spirit intercedes for the saints according to the will of God." The Spirit intercedes for the saints, you and I, according to the will of God. God's Spirit knows what God's going to do. And His Spirit will move and work in our prayer, will connect us in that intimacy with us and our Father in heaven. During that intimacy, He gets us aligned with Him. The Spirit knows, He works, He tweaks within us, and we see that alignment occur. In 1 Timothy 2:1-4, Paul again says, "First of all then, I urge that supplications, prayer intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people." Now, in a little while, we're going to talk about types of prayer. I'd be willing to bet that there are several right there. I also happen to know where we're going, so that helps too. Supplications, prayers, intercessions, thanksgivings be made for, how many? All people. Says, we supposed to leave somebody out of that? All people, guys. It says, "For kings and all who are in high positions." Yeah? No matter what party line, it's irrelevant. For those who are in high positions, that we may do what? Lead a peaceable and quiet life. You want a peaceable and quiet life? What did God say to do? Pray. Pray, especially for your leaders, because they have the ability to make your lives not so quiet or peaceful, right? We want to be praying that God would do that work in and through them. That we might live a peaceable, quiet life, godly, and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. That is God's desire, God's purpose. And so as we come to prayer, you know, I'm just hopeful that these, we're going to go through so many scriptures through this study. Trust me, there not be any shortage of opportunity to talk about prayer and to hopefully plumb some depth, right, of what that's all about. But I'm hopeful that it will maybe open our eyes to maybe some things we hadn't thought of when it comes to prayer and how that should look and how we hope it looks. So we're going to take a few minutes and we'll watch that video. It's basically an introduction tonight, so we're not getting into too many really deep subjects. We save that for next week. But hopefully it's going to whet the appetite for a desire for greater understanding. So let's check it out. Don't forget sound.
What motivates me to pray is that I believe it works.
Jesus gave us a model prayer. He said, "Pray, thy kingdom come; thou wilt be done."
All day I pray. He holds my hand. We walk and talk and fellowship.
Although prayer is often seen as a religious activity, it's really more about a relationship. It's interesting, some years ago, 1,300 ministers were asked in their ministries what they struggled with the most. And the answer was surprising. The number one answer was prayer. Not only in their individual life, but needing people to pray for them. The only thing Jesus' disciples asked Him to teach them how to do in Scripture is to pray. They were watching Him pray in His private life, and they were seeing God's power at work in Him publicly. Later on, when they devoted themselves to prayer, they saw it impact them, their families, the people they were touching. What would happen if we got right with the Lord and began to pray scripturally and strategically? What would happen in our churches if we became houses of prayer for all nations? We're going to talk about it in this session. It's our hope over the course of this Bible study that you would gain a passion for prayer unlike you've ever had before. And you would develop a greater understanding of how powerful a tool it can be in your life. So let's form a battle plan, let's get strategic, and let's get busy learning how powerful a weapon prayer can be. Welcome to the Battle Plan for Prayer Bible Study. We're so glad that you're joining us today. We believe in the power of prayer. We grew up in a praying home and saw amazing answered prayer in our parents' lives. And then God places us at a praying church with a pastor who is committed to prayer. And so we've seen in a corporate setting how God can work miraculously through prayer. And in our own lives and with our families, we've seen the Lord be so faithful and so gracious to answer prayer in our lives. And we want to invite the body of Christ to go on a journey to experience a closer, more intimate walk with the Lord. It occurred to us that of all the strategies we have, many of us have a strategy for our kids' education, perhaps a strategy for our health, or an economic strategy in our lives. But how many of us have a strategy for prayer? If there was ever a time to have a strategy, certainly in our culture, it's these days. All of us need prayer in our lives, we need God to move in our lives, we need direction and wisdom and protection. So through this Bible study, we encourage you to ask God to help you learn how to pray, to learn all that you can, to listen for His voice speaking to you, and that God would grant you a deeper intimacy and a passion for prayer. I remember when we were young, growing up, our dad wanted to go on a mission trip, and he needed $100. And he prayed and said, "God, would you send this so that I can go on this training mission trip to prepare me for the ministry?" And a lady in our church in Athens, Georgia, comes up to him later on, and she said, "As I was getting ready today, the Lord told me to bring this to you." And she gives him $100. Later on, he launched a Christian school with some other believers. They didn't have the books, the students, the teachers, the place where they were even going to meet. And they were praying that God would provide exactly what they needed. And we saw the Lord send books and resources. Other schools were shutting down and were sending books saying, "You can use these books." There was a lay witness revival team that showed up from Tennessee and said, "We're construction workers, can we help you?" And it was right when they needed to construct the classrooms at this church that opened up their facilities. And we just saw the Lord continue to lay tracks in front of a moving train and provide. And this is again, our home and our parents, and how the Lord worked mightily through that. We believe in the power of prayer. Not just because Scripture talks about it in such a powerful way, but we've experienced the power of prayer in our own lives. And it's our hope that as you go through this Bible study, it will increase the desire for you to go deeper with the Lord in faith and in prayer. The most powerful people in Scripture were people of prayer. When you think of Moses, Joshua, Joseph, King David, or in the New Testament, the Apostle Paul or Peter, the incredible things God did in their lives, in part because they truly sought the Lord. There were men and women of prayer. Our generation has lost sight of the power of prayer. We've forgotten a lot of the stories of how God has worked mightily through answered prayer. We think that prayer's too hard. We think that we know better, that we can go out and solve our problems on our own. And what we tend to do is make prayer a last effort, it's third base. And in Scripture, we see that God wants prayer to be first base, that it's what we engage in first. We go to Him first on the front end and say, "Lord, what is your will in this situation? I'm committing myself and all that I am to your glory. Will you guide and provide and protect?" When we do that, the Lord will honor that in a mighty way.
You learn to pray by praying. There's no other way to do it. It's not an academic thing, it's not something that's taught you. It's something you catch. And you catch it by being around people that have prayer fire in their heart. And the more you're around them, the more you take away that kind of passion to meet with God on a regular basis yourself. Pray. Keep praying. Don't stop praying. And you'll learn to pray.
In 1 Timothy 2, Paul writes, "First of all, I want there to be petitions and prayers and intercessions and thanksgiving be made for all men, for kings and those who are in authority over you, so that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life." He said, "It's a first priority, it's what we need to go after first." Prayer is the wind in the sails of our spiritual life. It is the wind in the sails of every ministry of every church. And if we're not praying and backing up every ministry with prayer, then we're going out and doing ministry in our own efforts, relying upon our own best-case wisdom, and we're not relying upon the power of God. And ultimately, we're going to end up like Peter saying, "We fished all night and caught nothing."
What motivates me to pray is that I believe it works. I have seen prayer become more effective in my experience than some of my man-made solutions. You know, I'm always trying to manipulate or control or come up with my own resolutions for problems. And it's exhausting when you're finding that there may be temporary dents made in some of the difficulties of your life, but really lasting change, time and time and time again, the Lord keeps proving to me that it's when I pray, release it into His hands, and then allow Him to do what I cannot do in my own strength.
The most important thing I could tell someone about prayer is you have to pray about prayer. I know that sounds kind of weird, but ultimately, we're not all that spiritual. All of us struggle in prayer. So let's get some help. And the most important thing I think we can do is ask God to help us. There's not a day goes by I don't say, "Lord, make me a man of prayer. Help me to pray." I mean, what do you think God does with a prayer request like that? When we come to Him and say, "Lord, teach me to pray," He's not saying, "Nah, I don't think so." He's absolutely saying, "That's just what I was wanting you to ask me." So pray about prayer. And when we pray about prayer, we'll find ourselves praying more and better.
Let's talk about the purposes of prayer for just a moment. Prayer is not really about prayer, just like your cell phone is not about your cell phone. It's about a relationship with other people. Prayer is about your relationship with God. So let me give you a definition that you can use. First, prayer is communion with God in order to intimately know, love, and worship God. It's about that relationship first, so that we can know Him and know Him intimately. Secondly, prayer helps us to understand and conform our lives to His will and to His ways. It does something in us. When we're praying, we're not trying to conform the head, God, to us, the body. We are lining up up underneath His headship. And when we're praying and surrendering our lives to Him, we begin to think His thoughts along with Him. We begin to conform our will to His will. Thirdly, prayer helps us to access and to advance His kingdom, His power, and His glory. We're accessing resources, provision from the Lord, power from the Lord through prayer. And also, we are advancing His kingdom. And He's getting the glory for answered prayer in our lives. And we're experiencing His character in a deeper level because of our prayers.
I think some people would say, "There's really no right or wrong way to pray, just talk to God." Scripture is full of examples of prayer and instructions for prayer. If you're going to enter into the hill of the Lord, you should enter in with clean hands and a pure heart. Probably one of the best examples would be what we call the Lord's Prayer. When Christ was teaching His disciples, they asked Him, "Lord, teach us to pray." And He prayed that simple prayer that we learned when we're children, that begins with recognizing our Father, that He is our Father, and that we are in loving relationship with Him, and hallowing His name, coming in recognition of His holiness, petitioning Him, praising Him, thanking Him, and just simply trusting Him.
When Jesus gave us a model prayer, He said, "Begin this way, our Father." And He talks about a relationship we have with the Heavenly Father. But then He said, "Pray, thy kingdom come; thou wilt be done." So I think one of the first things is to really think about who this relationship is with, who God is, and that He is a king. There's a king of a kingdom. And if we're going to pray for His kingdom to come and His will to be done, that's going to make a difference in the importance of what we're praying about.
Prayer can accomplish what a willing God can accomplish. What are you struggling with? Are there obstacles in your life? Learn to pray. Do you need wisdom to tackle some situation? Learn to pray. Are you facing depression or need guidance in some form or fashion in your marriage, your life, with your children? Learn to pray. One of my favorite passages about prayer is when Jesus talks about why God wants to answer prayer and what happens as a result. In John 14:15 and 16, Jesus is talking about that abiding relationship with Him. And He says that when we pray, something great happens. In John 14:13, He says, "Whatever you ask in My name, that will I do, so that the Father may be glorified in the Son." This idea of God being glorified through answered prayers repeated in John 15, in verse 7 through 9. He says, "If you abide in Me, and My words abide in you, ask whatever you wish, and it will be done for you." Now watch this. "My Father is glorified by this, that you bear much fruit, and so prove to be My disciples." So the first reason God wants to answer prayer is so that the Father will be glorified in the Son. Think about it. Because Jesus came, because He is our mediator between us and God, because He became our sacrifice of sin and opened up the veil so that we could enter the Holy of Holies, you and I can boldly approach the throne of grace through Jesus and pray to our Heavenly Father and have that relationship with Him, adopt it into His kingdom through faith in Christ. And then God, when He answers that prayer to our Heavenly Father, He says, "The Father is glorified in the Son." It's a great thing, I love that. Secondly, Jesus says in John 16:23 and 24, He says, "Truly, truly, I say to you, if you ask the Father for anything in My name, He will give it to you. Until now, you have asked for nothing in My name. Ask, and you will receive, so that your joy may be made full." I love that. Think about that benefit for us. When we pray, our joy is made full. I took that Greek word, I looked it up, and I was trying to find other places in Scripture where it was used. That word "full" there is used for when the disciples are catching that huge catch of fish, and the nets are full to the point of breaking. It's also used when Mary was breaking the ointment, pouring it on Jesus' feet, anointing Him, and it says, "The house was full with the fragrance." And so think about that. When we pray and God answers our prayers, our joy is made full. It fills us up to the point where it's overflowing out of us, and the house is filled with the fragrance. Other people experience the joy, that fragrance, that comes from answered prayer in our lives. God wants to answer your prayers.
If your heart is pure, your motive is desirous of kingdom response, then I believe that God takes our ineptness and our humanity, and He understands us. He's our Creator. So when you pray, God's listening.
Many people think about prayer, there's a posture for prayer, where you're kneeling with your palms together, with your head bowed. And we have a tendency to think that came from the Bible days. In fact, they typically would stand with arms lifted and eyes to heaven. But in the 1200s, during the Middle Ages, a new posture for prayer was developed. And it began by people who had to go through what is called an homage ceremony. In the homage ceremony, a king would bring his vassals, his serfs, his subjects before Him, and they would get on both knees and place their palms together, and they would place their hands inside the hands of their king, and they would say these words, "I'm your man." It was a simple pledge of loyalty and obedience, but it meant, "I belong to you, and whatever you ask, I will obey." And Christians realized they've got a king in heaven who deserves our loyalty and obedience far more than this earthly king. And so they began this new posture of prayer, where they would kneel, place their palms together as they had done in the homage ceremony, but realizing, "I'm entering the very throne room of heaven where King Jesus is seated on His throne, and He's holding out nail-scarred hands to me, saying, 'Claude, today, I want your life,' but not part of it, all of it."
Well, my talk with the Lord is very important, because to start the day off, you start off with Him. When you have Jesus, you have everything. So my morning time is to walk into the kitchen. I open up the blind, and I have fellowship with Jesus. And I talk to Him about the day. I just worship Him. And when He speaks to me through the Word, it's so real. And I don't want to let it go. And I have cards ready, and I write it out. And that's my verse for the day. All day I pray. He holds my hand. We walk and talk and fellowship. So you see, it's a relationship, like as though He's waiting for me every morning. "Molly, where are you?" And what I do is I worship Him and love Him. That's all I can do.
What would happen if you became a prayer warrior? What would happen if your church really began to seek the Lord in prayer? What if we became houses of prayer for all nations? We want to encourage you to go on this journey with us, to commit yourself to this, because we're going to go to boot camp together. We're going to learn about the types of prayer, the ways that God answers, hindrances to prayer that we need to deal with, keys to effective praying. We're going to be praying for the lost and for believers alike. And we're going to be developing strategies together so that we can deal with the issues of our day, the people around us, in strategic, specific prayer. And we're going to experience God to a greater degree in our lives. Come, go on this journey with us. Thanks for listening. God bless.
I'm leaking parts. So what do you guys think? I can tell you this. It's pretty awesome to see the real Miss Clara, you know, and hear, you know, her heart of prayer, that that's really, you know, who she is and what she's about. And it's exciting for me to know that there's people out there like that. And hopefully, challenging for us at the same time, that we too can be like that. And to experience, I don't know, I don't know if it does this for you guys. It does it for me. When I watch somebody that has that much of an intimacy with God, it makes me want that intimacy with God. Does that make sense? Makes me want to say, "Man, I want to experience that joy that she's found in the morning when she praises God in her quiet time." And I learned a long time ago, if I wait too long, the chaos of the day is ready to bust through the door, right? So setting that time aside and being able to be a part of it's exciting. So hopefully, it will be so for you all as well. So as you look at that video, what stuck out? Anybody want to share something that stuck out in that video? Concepts, ideas? I just gave you mine. Yes, ma'am? For sure? Well, good. We're gonna let you. No, I think that's vital. I think when we look at it, you know, Kathy and I, when we looked at it, I liked what the guy said when he said, "You need to be near somebody who has prayer fire, because fire's catchy." You know, I just know, you know, in my own story, you know, in my 30s, I thought, I probably uttered as close to the same line that Jason said once, something about the total package. When I was 30, I thought, "Yeah, you know, I've got it all. It's all figured out." And then, but I had no real time for the Lord. I had time for a lot of other things, but no real time for the Lord. And I got near a guy who had some fire burning, you know, in him for the Lord. And I started hanging out with him, and the next thing I know, I was at Bible college, so go figure. It was, you know, just the way that God utilized that. And it's going to cost something. It costs you something to be plugged into one of the prayer groups. But I promise, the benefits outweigh the cost. It can be very energizing to find yourself in that opportunity to prayer. Now, you can pray anywhere. You don't have to be in a group, but there's something about that, right? That encouragement that we receive when we're together. Anybody else got one? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, praise God? Yeah, for sure. It's helpful to know He loves them more than we can, huh? And you know, it's important, I think. There's a lot of legacies we can leave. Leaving a legacy of prayer would be pretty awesome. You know, I think when Marie and I were talking about doing the studies and stuff, I told her, I encouraged her to go check out George Mueller. George Mueller ran several orphanages, and the way he accomplished everything, from feeding, housing, clothing, it was all prayer. He never had a penny. He never had money for nothing. He never had it. He just laid it out in prayer, and God provided for his needs, you know. So it is exciting to say you grew up in that kind of household. You know, what would our attitude of prayer be? And rather than looking back and saying, "Well, I didn't have that," well, now's a good time, right? Now's a good time to have it, to experience those things together. What do you think? Do you think that we have lost a passion for prayer today? Yeah? And why? Why do you think that is? Yeah, maybe. I know Phil's got, he chewing on a bit for this one. I knew I was going to get to hear from Phil. Ready, go. Programs are better, or we bought into the idea. Well, we bought into, one of the things, was it the gal shared, right? "I think my plans are going to be better. I got this." I think we do. Yeah? There's a lot of that, too. And beware the American dream. Yeah, for sure? Yeah? Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am? I think that's the difference now, that guys like George Mueller would have said, "You can't afford not to pray." But we've kind of lost that. So when we talk about the idea that prayer is, at least in part, about relationship, you know, does that make it easier or harder, what do you think, to desire that, here? And I think, I think the cool thing is, it's never too late for that to start, right? It's never too late for that to start. And though it may be small, if you spend a little bit of time and study revival, take a look at the great revivals of the past, the one key in all of them, every single revival ever sprang out of prayer. Sprang out of prayer, prayer groups, small groups, usually, you know, I like looking at the Welsh revival, because Welsh revival changed the whole scope of the landscape. They literally closed down all the bars, not because they were out saying, "Oh, we can't have bars," just nobody wanted to go anymore. People were, that wasn't the focus of life anymore. It was not the preaching of how evil that is. It was just, "I want God, and I don't have time for that." So they had to close those things down. And that springs forth out of prayer. Yes, Howard? Well, we struggle with the purpose, right? Kind of like what I said at the beginning. If God has a plan, and He's going to accomplish His plan, does my prayer do something? And all I can point to is Scripture to say, "Yes. Here are guys who prayed, and it said the Lord heard their prayer and did these things." Now, would God have done those things anyway? I don't know. He doesn't tell us that. He just tells us this is how He did it, that He utilizes that obedience. I really liked what the guy said about in the 1200s. Did you guys hear that, where the posture for prayer changed? And I always wondered kind of where all that came from. And just, I love the picture, okay? You know, the picture of kneeling before the king, putting your hands in his and saying, "I'm your man." And to me, that's such a great representation of prayer, you know, like reporting for duty, reporting for service, and watching then what God will do. Daniel? Yeah? For sure. That, well, that's, so it really brings up an important point, because when we look at the Lord's Prayer, which is really the disciples' prayer, "Lord, teach us to pray," you know, He says, "Pray this way, our Father in heaven, hallowed be thy name; thy kingdom come; thy will be done." It's a surrender of control right out the gate. The idea that it's about you and not about me, and that's a real struggle, I think, for many of us. Kat? Yeah, yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah. Uh-huh, uh-huh. Well, yeah, for sure. And I think, you know, when we come to Him, one of the important things that I saw from the clip, I don't remember the lady's real name. What's her real name? Did you guys catch it? It was Molly? So anyway, she, one of the things that you see her doing in her prayer time is she's got the Word right there. And one of the things that she says is, "God speaks to me out of His Word. He brings a verse to me." You know, somewhere in her prayer time or in her reading time, as she's going through the Word, there's something that just is bracketed out. You know, I don't know if that ever happens to you guys, but sometimes I'm going through the Word, and here is, and she said, "That's my verse for today." She didn't say it's my verse forever, because tomorrow, what's she going to do again? Same thing, right? She's going to go in, she's going to look. And I think that's part of, you know, really surrendering control and then seeing the confirmation in God's Word of, you know, that God has this, or God speaking to you in a direction, pointing you in a direction, rather than spinning our wheels over here, right, to point us in a direction that's going to be helpful. And I think that's an important concept, not to lay by the wayside, but that it's a part of prayer, that we're in the Word. That's, you know, the book of Hebrews tells, chapter 1, first three verses, that what God has to say to us, He's given us, it's here, you know, open it up. It's living and powerful, it's sharper than any two-edged sword, right? It's able to pierce to the division of the soul and the spirit, to speak right into that spot, right? Like that surgical dart, right? Right in the right place at the right time. And I think that's a great source for us to be able to receive in that time as we seek the Lord. I had a couple other questions, maybe ideas to throw out before... I had a couple other questions, maybe ideas to throw out before we'll talk a little bit about a small assignment and to go along with the rest of the week. But why do you think sometimes prayer's last ditch instead of first ditch? Why does it end up third base instead of first base? Yeah, so we want to know that, it goes back to me again, to some of the great, you know, I don't know, forefathers is the right word, but early church fathers and some of the examples, not like way back, but just, you know, in the past few generations, seeing what God did in their lives through prayer. And I don't want to surrender that and bang my head against the wall trying to change without it. I remember my dad telling me, you know, I won't forget that I was, there were certain things in my life I didn't pray about. I don't want to bother God with this, you know? He's got a universe to run, and, you know, my son's Little League, really, that's just, pales in comparison. My dad asked me, do you care about it? And I said, yeah. And it goes back to the idea of relation. If the picture Jesus painted for us is pray like this, Our Father, so it's a relationship, right? If that part is true, then Our Father cares, even about those things, because it's relational. It's relational. He wants to express those things to us, and hopefully that can happen. And one of the things that we want to do, kind of moving forward, is this idea to take some time, list seven specific things you want to pray about during the study. This is vital to keeping and empowering your prayer time. Prayer journal. Remembering to write down what you're praying about, and then take the time also to write down when God answered, or where God directed, or what God showed you, what verse He brought to mind, all of those things. Because this is what happens, we just get busy and forget. And then one day, we can't remember. Seems like God answered that, but I, so we want to keep some kind of a record. At least as we go through this study, maybe we can get in that habit, right? Of keeping a prayer journal. Well, we want seven specific things that you're going to pray about during this study, not necessarily anything you're going to have to tell us all about, you know, but seven specific things that you want to focus on to commit through weekly prayers as we go through this study. And prayerfully, there will be some responses and answers for you as we conclude it. So I want to encourage you guys to do that as well. And then we have five days of work in the books. If you guys got your books while you're set to go, make that your daily devotion. If you don't have your books, there is printouts, yeah, that you can grab, and the rest of the books should come hopefully this week. So just call the church, check in with us, we'll holler at you. Worst case, it'll be here next week when you come. So it's been shipped out. Yeah, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. I, we're, they got them on, it's not on Kindle, but it's on Lifeway's own version of Kindle. So it's an ebook, but Lifeway's got a reader for that, too. So there's lots of ways. Amazon's got them, but for some reason, they're more money than if you buy it from Lifeway. So, but anyways, no matter what, we'll figure something out. So I would encourage you guys to come. We're going to divide up and pray.